It's seven o'clock.
Thank you. Let's get started. Good evening, folks. Welcome to the West Rock Hill Township Board of Supervisors meeting of February 7, 2021. I'm David Collingwood, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. I'm joined by fellow supervisor, Mr. Jim Miller, Vice Chair and Member, Mr. Jay Kaiser. I'll call tonight's meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan. One nation, God, divisible, liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being held virtually and will be recorded. At its conclusion, Mr. Lippincott will post the meeting on the township's YouTube channel. A link to the meeting can be found on the township's website at www.westrockhilltownship.org. I'd like to remind everyone that we'll be following the West Rock Hill Township policies for public meetings and the rules that apply as listed on page two of the meeting agenda. Are there any public comments on the agenda items as listed? If so, please state your name and address. Hearing none, I'll move on to announcements. There will be an executive session tonight, following tonight's public meeting, to discuss and real estate matters. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll list the items as they are listed. The January 20th, 2021 meeting minutes. The win plan review status, escrow release and vouchers. Emergency services report. Building zoning and building permit report. Public works report. FERC letter. And taxpayers' report, payment of bills. Mr. Lippincott, would you review the treasures report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll read the treasures report for January 31st, 2020. The general fund, $566,483.3 cents. Highway 83,253 cents. The open space fund, $1,033,721.97. The park fund, $30,072.63. The equipment fund, $256.75. Highway capital, $129.49. Street light, $33,823.60. The reserve funds, general fund reserve, $395,868.79. Open space Manderfield, $51,178.4 cents. Sewerage maintenance fund, $180,806.38. Stormwater fund, $6,562.70. And the escrow funds, $569,619.61.
Thank you very much. May I have a, please have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. A second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Any comments from the board?
I have none.
I have none.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. It passes. Okay, we're going to go on to confirmed appointments. I believe we have Brenda Phelan tonight from the West Rock Hill Historical Society to talk about the Heritage House. Brenda, are you here?
I am. Can you hear me?
You have five minutes. You may begin.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Brenda Phelan, President of the West Rock Hill Historical Society. I appreciate the time for this confirmed appointment. I'm here this evening to present what I see as a tremendous innovative opportunity for the Board of Supervisors to preserve, enhance and increase the value of a township-owned historical property, the Heritage House, the Heritage House of James Park. The Heritage House is the single defining structure citizens see each and every time they enter the park. It is also the face of the community to all that travel through the township. The unique opportunity to renovate the exterior of this historic building that I'm about to discuss is something the Board of Supervisors should fully and wholeheartedly embrace. Please reference the photo that I believe I sent to Greg depicting the urgent need for this undertaking. As you can see from the photo, the exterior of the building has suffered from 150 years of weathering, neglect and improper repairs. Fortunately for West Rock Hill Township and its residents, there resides within the township a commercial enterprise that is nationally and internationally known for its high-quality work to repair and preserve heritage buildings of stone built with lime mortars, specializing in landmark building conservation. This company is Degrucci Masonary Restoration, better known as Lime Works. They are located in State Road in West Rock Hill Township. The owner of this business is resident and taxpayer of the township. Mr. Degrucci has previously been before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, as he is in the process of developing and expanding his world-renowned business. As such, in the future, he will be required to meet certain township improvements to his property or negotiate fees in lieu of associated with these required improvements. It is my understanding that when Mr. Degrucci comes to an agreement with the township based on discussions with the township engineer and approved by the Board of Supervisors, he can then opt to pay for fees in lieu of instead of making certain physical improvements. Mr. Degrucci has evaluated what would be necessary to repair and preserve the Heritage House and historic township property. He is interested in supplying in-kind services equal to the agreed-upon fees in lieu of to preserve and increase the value of this historic gem owned by the citizens of the township. He would also use this as an opportunity to provide onsite instruction for his international staff of artisans, bringing even more notoriety to West Rock Hill. In closing, there is a resident of the township that owns a renowned business that specializes in building conservation who is interested in supplying in-kind donation in place of fees in lieu of to help protect and preserve a township-owned property and see it through its next 150 years. It's a definite win-win. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Any comments from the Board of Supervisors?
I'd like to make one or a couple, if I may. Okay, number one. The township, I believe, has a signed lease with the Historical Society that they will be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the building. Is that correct, Mr. Manager, Greg?
That is correct.
Okay, number two, we as the township have a resolution in place that was done, I believe, back in the early 2000s, and I would ask Mary to look that up for me if she could. For fee in lieu of contributions to the township are to be used only for the purpose of road improvements because that's why we're taking the fee in lieu of so that the business or the company doesn't have to do the improvements at that time. We waive that and we take the fee in lieu of money so that somewhere in the township, when improvements are needed, we have that money available to be used, even if it is used at that particular site later on in the future. That's the second item that I'm pointing out here to the residents. You start taking fee in lieu of money to fix a building up that the Historical Society already agreed to take ownership of and be responsible. You're sending a bad precedence for the future. I don't think this can be done anyway, but I'm not sure why this is being asked when we had already gone over the responsibility when these leases were signed. And I believe the same similar kind of leases signed with the farm, if I'm not mistaken. Mary, could you please make everyone aware of the resolution I'm speaking about?
You're on mute, Mary.
Sorry, I was on my VPN looking for a resolution at the same time, and I couldn't see that I was on mute. Fees in lieu of roads. Is that what I'm looking for? This is under my resol, okay. I don't have a signed copy of a resolution, but then Greg will have to look for that, but I have a resolution dated 2003. And it provides a lot of whereas clauses. A highway capital improvements account is hereby established, which shall be maintained as an account into which funds shall be maintained for highway capital improvements. A highway capital improvement fund shall be used for major highway road improvements and not for general road maintenance. The supervisors, upon request for a waiver of road improvements and where it seems appropriate, may defer the construction of road improvements and accept the capital contribution for those purposes. All residential subdivisions granted a waiver of road improvements set forth in Article 5 of the subdivision and land development ordinance shall pay a contribution as follows. And then it's it goes on to talk about how to calculate the fee in lieu. And Steve, you're on here, right?
Steve?
Yes.
You're probably more familiar with this than I am. Is that is that the resolution we're talking about?
Yes, I think it's gone through some different versions over the years, but in general, yeah, the road improvement fee in lieu was to go into a future road improvement fund.
I don't have any of the revisions, but.
My point being made, my point being made to the fellow board members is that I was on the Planning Commission before I became a supervisor in 2006, and I was on the Planning Commission for 12 years, and I remember this issue when it came up, and it was very precise when this resolution was adopted. You might have to look at the previous board members that I believe their names are probably attached to it. Nevertheless, to take to take fee in lieu of money and to try to use that to fix up the, what we call now the Heritage House, I believe is not a good idea. And I don't think the taxpayers of the township would be very much appreciative of that either. That's what I have to say, Mr. Chairman, on that issue. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Well, I'll speak up here. Thanks for your comments there, Brenda. Thank you for presenting tonight. When I look at this, we have no idea what the in lieu of funds are going to be even. It could be 150, 100, $200,000 worth in lieu, and who knows? I mean, we have no idea if they have to fix a lot of roads, and we also don't know exactly what the cost to fix up the house would be. So I think, I think having the information in front of us is fine, but we are in no position yet to even come close to making a decision on something like this. Now, hearing what Jay said, I'd be very interested because I kind of think that I had heard what Jay just said in the past also. So if that's the case, then we won't. I personally would not consider this because the fee in lieu of should go to the roads. So so when we get an answer from Mary and Steve, then I'd be happy to think about it again, but as of right now, I'm just going to sit back and wait for Jay's answer.
All right, thank you. Brenda, thanks a lot for coming out this evening and making the presentation. I'd just like to say that the Historical Society has done an admirable job on the house since leasing it. I think it's a job well done. Thanks a lot.
I, can I make one more comment? Am I allowed?
You may.
Um, I just want to correct what Jay said. We did not take ownership of this property. This is owned by the township. We are only renting it. So I mean, he said we took ownership. We did not take ownership.
You took a lease. You signed a lease.
I know, but you said ownership. I just want to correct that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for correcting that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate.
In that lease, it states you will be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that building.
Yes, it also doesn't say that we can't ask or request for help either because there are, there's our sections in there. We're allowed to ask. If it doesn't work out, that's fine, but.
You could go to every, every, every business in our township and ask for money like we had discussed before many times.
And we have. We've been doing that. We've raised, we've raised over $40,000. This is just, this was just an avenue to investigate. So I appreciate you listening and thank you for considering it.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Yep.
All right, moving on to committee reports. The first one will be the Planning Commission Report. Chair Chris Gerstein.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Planning Commission met last week. We had one applicant. It was the Schlosser Farm. Property on the east side of County Line Road, just, just south of Naysville, above Ingramsville. They're combining three parcels to create a 31-plus acre site, which are proposing to subdivide into nine lots. One of those lots has the existing homestead, which would remain, and eight others would be building lots. Now, they're proposing a 950-foot-long cul-de-sac, which again exceeds our Souter Reg by, our Souter Reg is 800, so it's going to exceed by 150 feet. So that's another one. They're looking for a waiver on length. Cut that and lot seven, which has the existing home, has the existing driveway, which will connect to the entrance down where it comes in off the county line, and will also be connected to the cul-de-sac lane just below the bulb. So it could act as a, as a emergency access. Can you hear me? Am I locked up?
I can hear you.
We can hear you. There's nothing moving on my screen. I'm sorry. So again, that can, that can work as an emergency access. You know, we're going to have to investigate that a little farther, but it's something that we'll talk about down the road here. All lots would have one-site septic with public water. Public advantage to public water, one of the advantages would be they'll have hydrants on this lane rather than having to rely on pump tanks and fire pools. The lane is proposed to be 30 feet wide. Curb and sidewalk, they're proposing to wrap the whole bulb and run down the south side of the lane down to the entrance and allowing parking on that side as well. Driveways would be lit with driveway lamps, you know, right at the, right at the driveway entrances off the lane with a boulevard-style street light down at the entrance off of County Line. That's, that's the plan in a nutshell. PC was, seemed comfortable with the plan as proposed. I know we're going to have continued discussion about the cul-de-sac length and emergency access. But again, we were comfortable with it, and it sounds like once once the Schlosser folks get all their outside agency approvals, they'll be back in. And again, we did have, we did have discussion about the cul-de-sac length. This is our third plan. We have three in process right now that are all asking for a waiver on cul-de-sac length, and we've had a lot of discussion about it, and apparently we're going to have some more tonight. So we'll wait till that comes around in the meeting. If there's any questions, I'll entertain them. If not, that's my report.
I only have one comment, and it's just a personal thing. In and around that area, and I did attend the meeting last week. You have the Ridge Road, you have Allentown Road, you have Cow Path Road, you have County Line Road, you have all these major roads that all go someplace. And I think the original plan was to call that Schlosser Road, and I just think that since it's a dead end, it really doesn't go anywhere, that it would be better to be called a lane or a drive. It just seems more in keeping with what its purpose is. So that's my comment. I don't know if.
That, David, that was addressed at the meeting, and Andrew was fine with, yeah, Andrew was fine with not using road. Just want to make sure that Schlosser name got on the sign.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay, so for the Planning Commission Report, may I have a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. A second? I will second it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Let's go to park and rec report with Mr. David Reese. Is David here?
Can I take it off mute? All right, park and rec doesn't get any better than that as long as it's unmuted. All right, so we had a good meeting last Thursday evening. We had some good conversations with Tony Marina in regards to the Liberty Bell Trail feasibility study. He was talking about some of the new proposals that he was looking to bring into the community, general population around us as far as the different trails that were, they were looking to implement. Good discussion, good open conversation. It was good. It was good to know about some of the trails. We do have some of them in the lower end of West Rock Hill Township. And then we had some current events that were moving forward with 2021 events. We do have fishing derby. We're still keeping it on the books for April 24th. We're in hopes to keep that on the books, keep it, you know, within, hopefully everything changes. We get, you know, all the COVID restrictions, you know, on hold or however we want to make those things known so it is able to happen because we'd like to be able to. We had originally talked about dedicating the fishing derby this year to Charlie Gans, who recently passed away in December. We think it would be a great opportunity. He was, you know, been involved in a park and rec, been involved in the community, been involved in the fishing derby for many years and lots of hard work and dedication. So we'd like to dedicate it to him in this year. We'd like to dedicate a bench or tree and a plaque as well, something to that nature. And kind of present it at the fishing derby. So we got our fingers crossed, and hopefully we're going to have that, and it's going to move forward. Barring all the restrictions and anything else in regards to the restrictions, there are new 2021 PA County Health, Bucks County Health and mitigation guidelines with certain guidelines as far as 10% guidelines and stuff like that under 2000. All those numbers that are out there on, I'm sure, published on the website. We have scheduled moving in a park, nothing specific, but it will occur in August, whether it's the 7th, 14th or 21st. September 1st, we're really going to cross our fingers because it's going to be a tough one, and if we have to, you know, postpone for a second year, that would really be tough because it's a great event for the community. I mean, it really is about the community and bringing everybody in for more or less a free day for the kids and the community to enjoy some events. Continue to work on park and plant, park plans, tree bench and all the other future projects that we have. We also had, I presented on behalf of the Penner's Little League, but it was presented to me on behalf of the new, the new president of the Little League, Joe Santura, in regards to working relationship with Penner's Little League and Penner's High School Baseball. In regards to the mutual use and shared cost of James Memorial Park as far as having a high school baseball team utilize the baseball field, they would be obviously working hand-in-hand scheduling around the, you know, the schedules of the township, working around, you know, schedules of any events in regards to the Little League as well as, you know, so everything works out. There's realistically about eight games, I believe, in the course of the season for the high school baseball team from March through May. So the conversation originally started a couple of weeks, maybe two months ago, to this extent of how to share expenses. Sharing expenses was something that kind of came into the front light of, for light, if you will, last year with COVID. Penner's Little League had to postpone their season. It was still successful. We were down numbers, down revenue, and as soon as COVID hit, not too long after that, we got hit by the flood. If anybody's aware of any of the damage that was done in our fields down at Sellersville and Percacy, you'd know there was thousands and thousands of dollars done. Penner's Little League did like what they always do, and they stuck together. They had their volunteers. They stood up and they helped, and they brought the community in to help. That's what it's known for. I know the township is, you know, known with the Little League for just about 30 years. The relationship is really well. So this, the document that had come to fruition was basically an agreement, basically came from, you know, a conversation that said, hey, let's share expenses, and then it kind of came to fruition where it said, hey, let's maybe make this an agreement so we can actually have some bearing on it. So it makes sense and presented to the to the township. It was, I believe it's a matter of, you know, I guess their request is to move it forward so that, you know, the kids can still play, moving forward in March. Still, if there's any concerns or comments or questions, I mean, I'd be happy, or I know Joe's on the call as well, to answer any questions, comments, concerns, moving forward so that the kids can still play. The high school baseball season only lasts for two months, I guess, two and a half months, March, April, May, until practices and the game start. Little League starts, shared costs, shared expenses, helps the nonprofit Penner's Little League kind of work together hand-in-hand and save some expenses. So that's kind of what we're looking for. That's what they were looking for. I say we, I was president for the last six years. I've been involved for 20 years in the Little League, so I have, you know, my heart's in it. So I believe it's, you know, passionate about the kids. They were able to have a senior night two years ago, and the experience that the kids had on that senior night, the experience is nothing short of fabulous. I mean, the big lights, it's their home field, what they played on, the majority of kids have played there, Penner's Little League for years, and they're, you know, coming back to play. So I guess they're looking for approval for the agreement to move forward. Any questions, comments, could be entertained, whether it's myself or Joe Santura.
Okay, I, David Collingwood, I'd like to step back before we talk about the Little League. I'd like to step back to the memorial you're suggesting for Charlie Gunst. What specifically are you looking approval for?
Well, we, I heard through the grapevine possibly that the township may be interested in co-sharing costs, maybe with a bench, with a tree and a plaque. I know we have the park and rec looking into a tree. We'd be looking to a bench as well as possibly a tree, a white oak tree. I believe that was, I hope I said that right. I believe it's a white oak tree to dedicate for Charlie, for the fishing derby.
So you don't have a definitive request?
It's the, the bench is the normal bench, the standard bench, the one we ordered for John Mann. The white tree would be, the white oak tree would be coming from the same location up in Allentown that we purchased the Christmas tree for John Mann, and the plaque would be coming from Bucksmont. We don't have a cost on that yet, but that is something that we're, Bob Struble's actually looking into.
And that money would be coming from the park and rec fund, correct?
Well, unless the, you know, the township likes to donate some money towards that. I mean, like I say, Charlie was a vested volunteer in the township for years, many, many years.
Any other supervisor comments?
Yeah, I have some comments. First of all, I believe you want to put the bench down around the pond. I think, I think a bench down there is a good idea. I think we could have a few benches down there. I know Jay's in favor of that also. But here, here's my concern. Every bench we have in that park was paid for by the Rotary or by a private individual who was who was putting it in there as a memorial to a loved one. Even the one we put in for John Mann was donated with money that was given to the park in lieu of flowers for John. Now you're asking to start putting benches in at the cost of the township for an individual, and I think that's setting a new precedent. And I'm not sure what, which way we'd want to go on that because, yeah, Charlie was a great guy, but but when do we start putting out money? I know a lot of us gave money to the church as was the request from Charlie's family.
Right.
So that, in my opinion, there should be another way to get money for that bench.
Agreed.
Any other comments?
I'll just make a brief comment if I may. I believe that we should move forward with, with providing a tree and bench, and if it has to be taken out of the park and rec fund, then that's where it would go from, from my opinion. Thank you.
I'd be happy to make a contribution as well because I know Charlie for 12 years that I've been on the park and rec, and I believe. I'd be happy to make a contribution as well because I know Charlie for 12 years that I've been on the parking rack and I believe his, um, dedication was valuable more than, you know, just his time that he spent there. So I, I'd be happy to make a contribution to it as well.
I mean, I'm not saying I wouldn't make a contribution. I'm saying uh, uh, we're, we're setting a new precedent by starting to buy benches for.
Absolutely.
With the township and, and I think it's something we just need to discuss. Um, I, I do have another point to this too. Um, the benches, we're still using the old style benches and and should we at this point start looking at a newer style like we, we, we walk up in, in Quakertown sometimes and they have these beautiful benches in their park, which they're going to last for 50 years. I mean, they're, they're, they're very nice. I know they're expensive, but there's no maintenance. And at some point we have to stop putting in benches that we have to continue to repair. Cause that takes up money. It takes up time from the township. It takes up Bob Strobel's time going out and getting the wood and everything. I just, I just think we should start, and if we're going to do it around the pond, we could start with a new design around the pond and then work it out into the rest of the park. That's just my opinion.
I, if I can respond it, I think that's why we have the, the bench plan for the park. So that was discussions and I think Mr. Collingwood actually described that we should utilize a similar, um, standard type bench. And that's why we went with that one for Mr. Mann's bench.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So are there any more comments on the, um, tribute to Charlie Guns from anyone else? If not, we can move on to, uh, Little League. Issues, any question or any comments by the, anyone on the board supervisors?
Uh, I guess, I guess I'll start. Um, first of all, I'm very disappointed that you, you had all these discussions about an agreement and never involved the township. I don't think that, I don't think it was fair. I think, uh, I think the township found out at the last minute. We've had no time to really look at, at this. Um, I'd like to hear from our attorney when, when the time comes around because you're changing an agreement, which our attorney should have been involved with. Um, you also mentioned that there have been some events there that turned out really good. Well, I'm sure from the schools perspective and from the, um, Little League's perspective, they were good, but when you held that, um, senior night at the pool or at the park, we didn't even know about it. We did not know you were holding that. And there were other people that had the park reserve that night. I was getting phone calls and I came over and I, I was looking for you. I was looking for the, the superintendent and everybody else trying to find out what was going on. Because we didn't even know about it. And then you also mentioned last year that you, you know, used the park for the tournament you had there, uh, when, right after, you know, while COVID was in process. But I read about that in the newspaper. No one told us you were doing that. So it really irks me that there's all these events going on that we're not aware of. And it, and it, and they do cause problems. People rent the, the park for weddings. They rent the park to have family picnics. And, and where are we finding that? We're finding out at the last minute after somebody's paid a hundred or $200 to rent the park. And then the little league or the, the school district comes in and, and it really bothers me that we don't have a set schedule for everything. Um, the, the parking lot, I, I'm looking, thinking of the parking lot and when I look at that, if you have two games in the same day, the parking lot is absolutely filled with cars. I think it's great that there's a lot of people at the park, but the residents can't get in there. They can't come in and walk. I think you're actually taking the park away from the residents when every parking lot and spot is in the place is filled. I would like to make another option, another, uh, idea for you though. The more property is sitting behind the township building waiting to be turned into a field. I mean, if you guys want to get together and start thinking about leasing it or, or putting a field in there, that field's been, then, um, it was what, five, six years ago, we, we had that leveled. So it's, it's, it's definitely packed down. So I, I would prefer you take a look at that. And, uh, I'm, I'm not sure about, I'm not sure about this agreement that we weren't even involved in. So anybody else have any comments?
Uh, David Collingwood, I'd like to just, uh, I look at this as a public park, as a people's park.
Residents.
It's, I think at first it should be for the citizens of the township and it's not, we don't want to build it into a baseball complex. And I have concerns about parking. Um, I have concerns about interference with people who are using it for walking. Cause I've seen at times there they're warming up and they're using the walking trails, uh, to pitcher catcher, whatever, to get warmed up. I worry about the expansion of the purpose of having this into how many tournaments are we going to have? How many playoffs we're going to have? How many night games we're going to have? How many practices are we going to have? Um, I, I just think the whole thing can, um, has the potential to really, um, get out of control. And again, I think the, the park is for the citizens and the, and the public first. Um, that's my comment.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I'm just going to make it. I did make my comment pretty clear, I think at the parking rec meeting, which we discussed this for over an hour and a half, I'm sure. Um, as most of you know, I was instrumental in building this field. I was a coach and senior league VP, uh, when I was involved in Little League baseball with my sons. My son, oldest son, Matthew, was the, was the, uh, catcher for the high school team in the late nineties. Um, I, I embrace baseball, but I also have some same concerns about the park and the parking and the kids. You, you're asking for something that should have been looked at and I think should have been brought to the parking rec committee months ago, if not a year ago, if this was wanted to happen. Uh, the other thing that I remember, because when we got approval to, I think, we have to look at the agreement through Mary for sure. But, uh, when we got the approval to build this field and we constructed it, um, the, the agreement, I believe reads that when the field is not being utilized for the, for the little league, which was the intent of this field to be a, a field that the little league, senior league division called home. Because we've always had to fight and struggle for fields and the field that we had down in Sellersville always used to flood. That was the purpose of building this field. Um, one of the things that, that is in that agreement is, I think, I'm not, I don't think, I'm pretty sure it's in there, that the public, the township residents would be able to use that field when it's not being utilized by the little league. And as a coach, as, as a coach from a senior league division perspective, if the field is being occupied by the high school from three to 5:30, I can't have a practice with my, my, my team on that field. And I did explain this and, and, uh, comment about this last Thursday night at our parking rec, uh, meeting. So those are, those are some concerns that I do have. I do think there needs to be some more discussion on this situation. But also when you have 16 and 17 year olds coming there and even 18 year olds for that matter, high school level, they, they all drive their own cars. And they leave together and they don't always drive together. They, they, they have, you know, if you have 15 guys or you might have 25, 25 cars. So I do, I understand the concern of the other parking rec members that commented last week. And I do think that, uh, to, to be able to give an answer on this uh, prematurely or this quickly, I don't think we can do it. Uh, I, I have some real concerns. I do, I do like Mr. Miller's idea about the, the Moore Farm. The, uh, Yellow Jackets were going to create soccer fields over there and they never did. So that might be something to look at, but I think this is pretty quick to be able to make a judgment on this, this month. Those are my comments. Thank you for your time.
So if I could address a couple of those?
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Sure. Um, so the, the three to 5:30 schedule, um, when the high school would be utilizing it, um, it is actually, I've been at the park at three, 3:30, four o'clock. There's five cars in a parking lot. There's six cars in the parking lot. Um, if you requested that they would park and the kids would park for the baseball field over in the, the stone parking lot, I'm sure that would be a comedy. I'm sure that would not be an issue. I'm sure all the issues could be worked out. Um, I, I mean, there were some concerns about the extra trash. The little league is also responsible for the trash. So I don't think that would be an issue. The extra porta potty use, if there would be extra, you know, usage of the porta pots, absolutely. So that would incur costs. I, that's understandable. A 10 year lease to a five year lease. I agree that it can be applicable to change anything like that. The Moore field, we all know why the Yellow Jackets moved away from that because there was um, stormwater management that needed to be put in and that was a couple of hundred thousand dollars that they had, um, specked out. Um, as far as the drainage, um, September Fest, we, you know, September Fest, we host and hold how many cars there? There's hundreds of cars there. So like I say, if it's parking is a concern and you want to say, okay, we have Walk with the Doc, I understand that Jim, uh, because we did have a discussion that night at, um, when it was a senior night. Um, it, it's a matter of communication. Um, the scheduling of the park events and Walk with the Doc, I guess is once, twice a month. Um, we would just make sure that the parking was open in that front row where the new electric, um, parking, uh, the new parking, uh, charging station is. Um, I think all the things can be worked out. I think it's just a matter of working in parallel with Mary and, you know, the, the school solicitor took, took a look at it. We have had adults that started the conversation. Like I say, it started with the, the, the basis of sharing costs. That was the premise of the conversation. It only came to a document based on the fact that, hey, maybe we ought to put this in a, in a document and a, and an agreement. That's why it wasn't something that was brought sooner because we were just talking about sharing costs. It really was that simple. It was nothing with ill intent involved. Um, it was a matter of sharing costs because of last year was an eye opening experience when everybody was out there on the tractors cutting grass because we couldn't afford to pay anybody because we had numbers down. We had, you know, revenue loss based on the fact that again, besides COVID, we had two successful seasons because we kept pushing forward and we had the wherewithal and the people and volunteers for the organization that continued to have two successful seasons when there wasn't hardly any games in town. Um, so I believe, I mean, if you're looking at the relationship that Penner's Little League has with the, you know, the township, I mean, can we continue to work down a parallel path and work out the concerns as well as allowing the kids to play? Because I think that's the, that's a win-win situation. I mean, the details can be worked out with the lawyers. I mean, and the, the adults in the room, the kids, we just want them to play. I mean, we want them to use the field as, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, that's why we build a park.
That works, David. Thank you very much.
Yep.
May I have, um, please have a motion to approve the parking rec report?
Mr. Chairman, before you make that motion, I'm not sure what was just said there. You said that works. I believe that Mr. Reese thinks that means the, the
It's rice, but that's okay. It, it's technically rice, but that's okay.
Dave Rice.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
All right, um, thinks that the high school will play games on that going forward. I
It's only eight.
He proposed moving along parallel paths. And um, I just want to, I just want to make sure that number one, everybody understands what's going to happen next. And number two, if I'm charged with trying to negotiate an agreement, I haven't heard any direction from the actual board of supervisors that you, you, you want me to even look into it at this point.
I'm not sure what to tell you to look into, Mary. Um,
Well, I think the most important thing is to understand what's going to happen on the field in the next three months. I think that you have to have a meeting of the minds with Mr. Rice on that point.
And I, I would agree with that. Uh, the other two supervisors can speak for themselves, but I would agree because at this point I don't see anything changing other than the little league can use the field and no one else can.
I, I, that, one of the questions that I have, David Collingwood here, uh, and I saw some emails that were, were, were going around today and there's something written about that there was a casual agreement to use the township park. I, I, I'm not quite sure what that means or who agreed to this casual agreement from the township side. And I don't know if someone can explain that to me, uh, as well. But we don't, we do not have a, a casual agreement in place right now. We have no agreement in place right now. So I think that this is, this is going to take some a lot of time to, and a lot of work with the principals involved to have discussions and, and, and just figure how and if we go down this road.
Mr. Collingwood, can I ask you a question?
You may.
Um, so you were at the parking rec meeting, but you did not voice your opinion in any manner. I'm just curious why now and not then?
Well, I tried to stay neutral because, um, you guys, as Jay, Mr. Kaiser said, you took over an hour and a half to discuss this one issue and, and, and he, he also, um, did not have much to say at all during your discussions. He stayed out of it and he let the, uh, parking rec work through that as a, as a group.
So, so back to Mary's question, um, I don't know where we go with this, but I don't think anything changes until we get an agreement. Or if we get it.
Yeah, Jim, can I, can I ask Mary, um, about the agreement? Cause I'm pretty sure she was the solicitor when this, when we did this, um, when we built this field. And, and there, there were things that were, that were agreed upon. And I don't know that we can, that we could even, if we wanted to allow this to happen without changing the agreement we currently have with the township. Uh, the little league and the township, I mean. Because I believe it stipulates that the, the, the public, the township public has to have access to that field when the little league isn't using it. So I'd like to, I'd like to see what that uh, agreement means word for word.
Yeah.
Mary.
The agreement between the Penridge Little League and, and the township, and it is old. It, 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 I think goes back to the nineties.
It was revised like five years ago when we built the field.
Yeah, but it wasn't, it wasn't revised to, uh, on the issue that Jay's addressing.
No.
Um, the it, the quid pro quo for the little league field being in the township park was that the little league would construct the, the field, and then it would be available for use by township residents when the little league wasn't using it. That, that was, I, I don't have it in front of me, but I've looked at it enough times. I'm confident in saying that that's what it says. So, um, it takes more. It would take a reworking of that agreement as well as, um, and I have not looked, I, I looked briefly at the agreement to see the subject matter. But it's a lengthy agreement. It was clearly written by an attorney. And I didn't have any authorization from you to spend the township money to review it thoroughly, um, not being sure which direction you were going to go in. So yes, Jay, your question, the yes, that was the original agreement. That's the agreement that's in place now.
Okay.
So can I ask another question? So five years ago, Faith Christian was actually there and their middle school utilized the baseball field during a day, during those hours that were the high schools requesting, there was never an issue. They utilized it for a year before they built their field over at Faith Christian over in Sellersville. Um, so just an FYI, there, they did use it at that timeframe and there was no issues.
I for one, I'm not aware of that at all. So that's the first time I heard Faith Christian was using it, but
Oh, five years ago, it was, I think, um, it was
I'm not denying what you're saying, Dave. I, I'm just saying I was not aware of it at all. I mean, I, I don't sit out there or sit over there and watch who uses the ball field. Um, but like Mr. Collingwood, I would like to know who on the township side came up with a gentleman's agreement to, to move this way. Because it wasn't me, it wasn't David, Greg, Jay, were, were either of you involved? Cause
I, 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 if you look at the email chain there, Mr. Miller, I'm the one that asked Greg to send an email to the person that asked, that said that question, who from the township, who? It says, Mr. Kaiser wants to know who from the township had casual conversation.
Yep. Thank you.
I wasn't involved in anything at all regarding that this matter and, and quite frankly, I explained, uh, it's a shock that this was not brought up to the parking rec months ago. As being, me being the liaison to the parking rec, I would have appreciated it. Um, so that they could digest it and really thoroughly ask questions and think this through clearly before a decision had to be made tonight because the season starts next month.
And anyone who rents the, uh, James Memorial Park baseball field has
And anyone who rents the James Memorial Park Baseball Field has to go out and application with. And reserve it seventy-five dollars.
Was that done through Faith Christian Academy, Mr., Mr. Manager?
Not that I recall, but I can look back into it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think we're back to square one is. I think that. If this matter, if this matter is going to be discussed. You, you probably should start again with bringing it to the park and rec. And then from park and rec, it should come to the board of supervisors. I don't think we should go anywhere. With our attorney on this, my opinion, I would like to, if there's any comments. The board of supervisors, I'd like to have a, a motion to approve the park and rec report.
Is that include, Mr. Chairman, does that include tabling this issue regarding the Pen Ridge High School?
Well, I think, my personal opinion is we should table, I think we're back to square one.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with Jay though. I think we should table this issue until there's more definition and we understand what's really going on. And that should be part of the agreement, or that should be part of the motion. Table this and approve the rest of the park and rec report. Does that sound correct?
That works for me. So could I have that motion? You're, you're making that motion, Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I have a second?
I'll second it.
Fine, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Rice. We'll move on to the Conservation Committee, Mr. Michael Schreimer. Is Michael here?
Yes, I am. Good evening. Our last Conservation Committee meeting was held on January twenty-first. We discussed the following things, open space signs. We noticed that the open space sign on the Wyman property is damaged. And then signs on the Zimba property have a number of holes and. To my view, they look like woodpecker holes. So the Conservation Committee is going to inspect the rest of the signs and order repairs or new signs. I would say if anybody in the township notices that a sign is damaged, to let the township manager know and. And we'll take care of it. I think we want to make sure that if we're advertising open space, the signs ought to look. Professional and not damaged. Next one is acreage ovals. In the middle of the sign, there's a little oval on some of them that identify the number of acres. And there's some that are not on the signs. So we're going to get new acreage ovals. And add those to the signs in the center where they're missing. Next one, Manderfield Preserve. There was a discussion about the, the state of the trails and markings and having maps. So the township is going to check the condition of trail markings, maps and signs. And address any problems we have to try and fix those. Preserve property database, we continually update the database when we add new properties to the list of. Open space and the information from the database is used to build the preserve properties map. That you see in the township newsletter. That was it for the meeting. Our next meeting is on March eighteenth. And we usually hold these meetings on the third Thursday of unnumbered months. So it's every other month at seven PM. Currently they've been held on Zoom, but. We'll see, we'll keep going that way until we can meet in person. Thank you.
Michael, Mr. Schreimer, any comments from the board of supervisors on the Conservation Committee report?
I have none.
I have a que, I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You may.
For, for Mr. Schreimer. Mr. Schreimer, regarding the Manderfield property. I haven't been out there for a while myself. Has anyone looked at or, or viewed? The trail, any issues with the, the ash trees that are dying from the Emerald Ash Bowl? Have we looked, has anybody looked at any of that from the Conservation Committee standpoint and have identified anything?
We are going out there as soon as it stops snowing. And the.
Okay.
I, I have, and the guys have been out there and have cleaned up some trees. But there's going to be an inventory taken as soon as the weather breaks.
Would you be able to let, would you be able to let the board know what that, what the results are of that, that view?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? I'll look for a motion to approve the Conservation Committee report.
I'll make that motion.
And I will second it. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Then we'll move on to commission reports. Police report, the Chief Rod Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you have in front of you is the Pen Ridge Regional Police Department report that lists the calls and activities for January twenty twenty-one. The department handled four hundred and sixty calls for service. Of those, two hundred and nineteen were in East Rock Hill Township. Two hundred and forty-one were West Rock Hill Township. Department handled seventeen crashes. Five in East Rock Hill Township and twelve on West Rock Hill Township. Six were reportable crashes and eleven were non-reportable crashes. Responded to twenty-nine crimes, six part one crimes and twenty-three part two crimes. West Rock Hill, the crimes are as follows, corruption against a morose of a minor. Two theft capable. Disorderly conduct cases. One possession of marijuana, one harass, or three harassments. Two trespass cases, one dog law violation, two ordinance violations. In East Rock Hill, the crimes are as follows, two fraud cases, one criminal mischief arm, one ordinance violation, one burglary. One theft, one DUI, case of conduct files and into a. Pulsion of missiles into a vehicle, an actual missile being charged into a vehicle, discharged into a motor vehicle that's moving. So that's, but that's the terminology for propulsion of missiles into vehicle. One criminal trespass, three disorderly conduct charges. One recklessly endangering another, one possession of an instrument of crime and one for criminal mischief. Who's conducted two hundred and eighty-nine traffic enforcement detail. Hundred and nineteen traffic details on Old Bethan Pike. Issuing eight verbal traffic warnings, fifteen citations and twenty-nine written warnings. And also has also conducted five hundred and fifty-eight business checks. And that's the police report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chief Blake. Any comments by the other supervisors on the police report?
I have none.
Saying none, I have a. Motion to approve the police report as. Red?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
May I have a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's move on to the tax collectors report. Is Suzanne Clark available?
You skipped the part, you skipped the.
Joint Rec.
Joint Rec, Mr. Miller, excuse me.
That's quite all right.
And corrected, thank you.
All right. The pool will be opening for the twenty twenty-one season with guidelines for COVID nineteen in place. We are still working on all those details. As you may or may not be aware, the Quaker Town Pool will be closed for the twenty twenty-one season for renovations. This has actually helped us in many ways. We have hired Kevin Hickey. To manage our pool this year. Kevin was the longtime manager at Quaker Town Pool. And led the effort last year for the COVID nineteen guidelines. Kevin is also a, a middle school teacher in Pen Ridge. So he, he's, he knows a lot of the, the students in the area. The Quaker Town Swim Team will be moving to Holiday House Pool this season because Quaker Town's closed. We worked out an early morning practice schedule that will not impact our members because they'll be coming over at like seven thirty in the morning. Holiday House Pool will close at six PM instead of eight PM on three occasions for swim meets. And this is noted in our schedule and on our application form. So everyone that applies for membership will be aware of it. Swim team members who do not. Who, who do not become pool members will pay a forty dollar flat rate for using the pool for morning practices. And they'll have to pay the daily rate of twelve dollars for each time they come to the pool if they're not. For other times other than when they're here for practice. These are the same guidelines they used in Quaker Town. So we've, we've just adopted those. One of, one, anyone from Quaker Town Borough who, who wants to join the pool will pay the non-resident fee just like everyone else. So. We, we kept that intact. Dave Revett, the manager at Sellersville, has, has notified all of our guards for twenty nineteen that we are accepting applications. Kevin Hickey has notified the Quaker Town Guards from twenty twenty that we are accepting applications. And we're expecting a minimum of ten guards coming down from Quaker Town. So that's helped us. All the drain work that was completed in the fall and we've seen no issues from it. Don Kelly, the, the company that does our pool maintenance. Has been approved to seal that one big crack in the diving well and to clean and paint the pool. They'll all be done in the spring. And Malukans will be returning to run the Auntie M snack bar, snack shop. And we will start scheduling cleanup days as soon as this weather breaks. So that's really it. We're, we're moving ahead quickly. We hope to have a very successful season.
Any comments on the joint rec authority report?
I have none.
I have a question. Given that our pool is fifty years old. What is Quaker Town doing? Are they doing a complete refurbishing of that pool? Are they going to glow it up and start all over again? What, to what extent do you know, if, if you know?
They do. Quaker Town Pool has a liner in it.
Wow.
And the liner, they had drained the pool at some point because of COVID and the, the liner actually dried out because of it. And, and caused a huge leak in the pool. They are at a minimum, at a minimum, they're going to replace the liner, but once they get that out and start looking at it, they may have a lot of other work to do.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I have to say, I like the idea of a liner, but the shape of our pool would not, would not work for that. I mean, I, I think they're, they're a great. A great way to go. You don't have to paint. But like I said, it would not fit in our pool.
Thank you. There's no other comments. Do we have a motion to approve the park joint recreation authority report?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, and I will second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Now we'll go to Suzanne Clark. She's available. There she is.
I am here. I don't have much to report other than the fact that everybody should have their county and township tax bill in their mailbox. For March the first. That's all I have to report. So they're in the mail. They're being printed as we speak and you'll have them soon.
Thank you. No comments from the supervisors. I'll look for a motion to approve the brief.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Not second.
I will, okay, thank you, Mr. Kaiser. They were signified by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Thank you. Now we'll go to the engineer's report, Mr. Bala.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to say I need to, I do not have anything on my report tonight. So unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
I have no questions.
I have no question.
I have no questions. I'll make him, I'll make a motion. We approve his report.
I'll, I'll second it.
For what it's worth, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Bala. Now we'll go to the solicitor's report.
Hi, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have. Actually, two items under the solicitor's report tonight. Only one was too late to make it for the agenda. The, the first item is the PRA agreement. You entertained. PRA last month and I think even the month before to talk about a sewer line extension along Ridge Road. You had a series of questions for them that they answered. And it's under my report, not because I have anything to say, but I think that seemed like the most logical place to put it. To find out how, yeah, thanks Greg. How you'd like to handle this going forward. You had asked them to get back to you on, on a certain number of questions.
Questions, right.
Can we go over that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Do we have those questions?
Yes. We do. I, I did a minute ago and I, well, you know what? If you'd like, hold on, let's do it this way. Can I screen share, Greg?
Yes, you can. Barry will stop screen sharing and then you can screen share. You can.
Can I?
Can?
Oh, wow.
Yeah, why don't you tell me how to do this on here? Present now, okay? This might not work. All right, let me just. Can, can you see this now? It says I'm presenting to everyone. Can you see it?
I got it.
All right, the, the, in red, those are my questions back to Greg. So. The question why the authority is in extending the sewer line past Mountain View Road is because the grant we received. Was only for a certain size project. So the extent, so that was the extent that we could extend the main. And still be within the guidelines of the grant. The design of the sewer main. Is such that all of the properties between Mountain View and three oh nine can connect into this new sewer main via gravity. If and when they decide they'd like to connect. And looking at the cost from, from Mountain View to the last parcel before three oh nine. I caught, believe the cost would be about the same without even having a grant. I'm not quite sure what that means. So if, Greg, if you understand. In looking at the cost to extend the main from Mountain View to the last parcel before three oh nine. Isn't that where the grand area is, Greg?
Correct, that's my understanding of where the grand area is.
So I, the question I think the board actually asked was. Why don't you extend it further? And, and I thought they were offering some comment. On the, on the cost to take it further, but it doesn't appear that they are, does it?
It does not seem that they are, but I think what they're saying is it would cost the same if people wanted to connect.
If more people wanted to.
Pacific area. Because it has to be under so much money. And that's why the only reason that they're going that far. But they could go further if people, but it wouldn't be included in the grant.
All right, we should probably get clarification of that.
Absolutely. And Mary, I, I asked this question precisely because. There's, what is there? A couple houses there yet that, that go from Washington Avenue. Well, not Washington Avenue, but from, from where that stops. What is that called? Mountain View there? What is it? Six houses maybe, Greg? You're ripping up Ridge Road. You're tearing up Ridge Road to put a sewer line. And it doesn't make sense to me why they're not doing it up there to get those houses.
I, I agree with Jay. I mean, if you're going to do it, do it, do it all.
This, this, I, I believe that this line is being put in for that development that's on the other side of the three oh nine that has been proposed and has been waiting for sewer. And I am, I am very concerned and I'm making this public, my opinion. I believe the taxpayers, the residents along that Ridge Road are, are, are funding this project other than the grant. To get that sewer line there for that new development. And it bothers me. That those citizens are not being included from Mountain View to the three oh nine bypass.
And then the second question is. Why the developer isn't funding this project when the developer would ultimately benefit from the fact. From, from it due to the fact that a developer doesn't have any approved plans by the, from the township. Wow, this is all one sentence. So this project was brought about because of the authority receiving a grant and knowing. That there are failing systems along the route. If when any future residents tie into the line, they will pay. Their fair share of the cost to extend the sewer from the terminus point to the property, just like any other residence. I don't think that's different than what Jay was saying. And then the final question is, the authority board would like to see the grandfathered mandatory connections. Done for all properties that sell, but the board understands and appreciates the position of the board of supervisors. If the supervisors would like to have language included in the ordinance that would allow a property to be bequeathed to someone already residing at the property. Or given to a family member and not have to connect to public sewer at that time, as long as the system's not failing. PRA would be amenable to that verbiage. We would just request that PRA be notified. would be amenable to that verbiage. We would just request that PRA be notified when something like that occurs, so we are aware that the new owners are not required to make connections. And my question, back to Greg, was do we know when property changes hands? Can, can we agree to provide that notification? If we tell property owners that they must be the ones to inform PRA, that an in-family bequest has taken place, the next generation will probably be unaware of that requirement. That was, I'm sorry, that was just in-house staff stuff, so. And I will stop sharing.
So it looks like we still have questions, or more clarification is needed for, specifically question number one.
Yeah, I think what Jay's asking, and I think it deserves an answer, is if you extend it further, what would the cost be to the residents, you know, first, and it's two-stage question, the residents who the PRA planned to have in the, in the program, in the grand area, and then the ones who would be outside the grand area?
Right.
And, because I believe we clarified this before, that there's, I believe, I believe, Greg, you'll be able to tell me, I believe there's about six houses from Mountain View to the 309 bypass. It just doesn't make sense to me why they wouldn't look at that or include that. If you're tearing up, we all know what it's like to go through construction, and you tear up, especially Ridge Road, which was just repaved, just repaved two years ago, right?
Right.
I think, I think we need some, some real, real clear answer on paper of what, what that entails.
All right. Greg, do you have that? And I don't mean the answer, I mean the question.
Yes, I do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is it all right if I move on to the next topic under the solicitor's report, or do you still have questions on that topic?
I just want to know that, for sure, Mr. Lippincott is going to move forward with that question and go back to the authority for clarification, correct?
Correct. And it is six houses. I was looking it up. Exactly.
Yep.
Yes, you may proceed.
I'm sure now I will find the paper in my packet with that on. The, the item that's not, the item that's not on the, it's under the solicitor's report is something that came up in the, in the last day, and I notified the Board of Supervisors by email yesterday afternoon. Grandview Hospital needs to go to settlement on the, the financing for the expansion by March 8th, which is before our next meeting. In order to go to settlement, they need to have their plans recorded. In order to get their plans recorded, they need their development and all their agreements signed, and they need to meet all the conditions set forth in your approval resolution. So when they called me to tell me that, they also told me that they didn't have any changes that they needed to make to the development agreement or the parking, the reserved parking agreement. So I'm asking if you're willing, and I'm sorry that you've had them for almost, almost six hours now, if you're willing to authorize the execution of those agreements when Grandview Hospital signs them, so that they don't have to wait until the next meeting and mess up their financing to move forward.
And that's because they need this before our, our March meeting. They need it before March 8th, correct?
Correct. It will cause a considerable delay in the, in the project, and they will incur considerable costs. They have a bond issue, and the bond issue requires that the money, or at least a portion of the money, be spent within a certain number of months from the date of the bond issue, and March 8th is their drop dead date. So the agreements that we'd be looking for authorization to sign are the development agreement, which was for a letter of credit, but is now a cash escrow agreement, the reserve parking agreement, and the memorandum of development agreement. The memorandum of development agreement doesn't have any substantive terms to it. It just gets put on the record instead of the very long development agreement, because it saves money to just put a memo of the development agreement on to alert people to the fact that there's an agreement that they need to read, and we get something on the public record.
So I think we're all aware there are three agreements, and I, I know they say they have no questions, so I would be in favor of moving ahead with this. So I'll make a motion to approve.
You're going to approve to authorize the chairman to sign the three agreements that are required, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
I would second that motion. Any comments, questions, Mr. Kaiser?
No, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, fine. So that all being said, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Solicitor, will those documents be at the, are they at the township building now?
No, they're not. I think.
Yes, they are.
The hospital needs to sign them first and get them back to you.
Oh, you want the hospital to sign them first?
I think so, Greg. There, it can go either way, but I think it's better to have the hospital sign them first.
Okay.
I do, too.
Because they have to come back to me for recording anyway. So if you sign them and send them, then there's the question of who recorded them, who's going to record them. And just as, as a parenthetical note, and I know that Steve will be interested in this, the, they have consolidated all the tiny little parcels that make up the Grandview Hospital complex, contiguous complex, and, and there's one, one parcel now on that side of the street.
Thank you. Mr. Lippincott, you'll take care of that, and you'll let me know when the documents are available to sign, right?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Are you finished?
I'm finished, if unless you have questions for me.
I have no questions.
Nope.
Thank you.
May I please have a motion to approve the solicitor's report?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We can now move on to the township managers' report. Mr. Lippincott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have one item. The township has declared a snow emergency for tomorrow at 6:00 AM till Friday 6:00 AM. So we have a snow emergency declared, which means people cannot park in cul-de-sacs in the township.
Which is our next subject.
Which is coming up very shortly. But, yeah, so a snow emergency has been declared for tomorrow into Friday 6:00 AM. That's all I have.
Thank you. I assume the township offices will be closed then?
If it's bad, then yes. If it's not bad, then no. We'll see if it comes.
But we can clarify that you can all work virtual, correct?
Correct. If, if the township offices are closed, you can call us. We still get the phone calls. We still get the emails. Just can't come to the counter. Other than that, we're fully operational.
Business as usual. Thank you. Any comments? Any comments on the township managers' report?
Yes, I have one.
You may.
Can he, can he make sure he gets those plans over to Grandview Hospital for signatures?
I can. I, yes, I can. I can do anything to Grandview.
Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the township managers' report?
I'll make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Lippincott. Does anyone have anything to discuss under old business?
I have none.
I have none?
None.
All right. Board of Supervisors, I believe there's one that's on the, on the agenda. Mr. Miller, new business, you have something you'd like to talk about?
I do. Having attended the planning commission meetings for the last couple of years, I've noticed this trend that we have with cul-de-sacs and P loops. I just feel like every time one of these comes to the planning commission, they struggle to make it successful, and I applaud them for that, but I think we're just making a lot of problems for ourselves. And I'd really like to just open this as a general discussion right now. I know we have most of the planning commission here, to talk about it. The, the issues I've heard, I've heard, as Greg just said, an emergency, no one can, can park in the cul-de-sac. Well, people still do, and, and it's very difficult for our, our people that are out there trying to plow. The maintenance of the cul-de-sacs and P loops becomes very difficult any time of year. A lot of these, we have issues with emergency exits. I know in, I've, I've heard of instances where they want to use someone's driveway. Well, what does that take away from that person as far as their, their personal right to their own property? If they have to keep an area open, can they not put up a fence? Can they not get a load of mulch in on their driveway? There's just a lot of things like that. I heard of one where they wanted to use a path as the exit point for an emergency. Well, that didn't make a whole lot of sense to me, because I don't know how you're going to get a, an emergency vehicle down a path if you need to get an ambulance in or out. And some of these, as, Chris mentioned earlier, almost every one of them is exceeding the limit of distance that is permitted for cul-de-sacs and P loops. So having said that, I would like to hear from the planning commission first on, on how you feel about this subject. So I'll open it up to the planning commission, but Chris, do you want to take the lead on that?
Yeah, sure. I'll take the lead. You know, as you mentioned, and as I mentioned, you know, the last three projects that we've had come in were projects looking for relief on the cul-de-sac length. And for the most part, the planning commission members are willing to entertain it if there is some type of an emergency access. The design of the emergency access, the, the limits of the access are, are something that would have to be worked out with the township, but it's, it's, it seems like it's definitely a necessity amongst the attitude of the, of the planning commission members. You know, we, we've worked with the snow, snowier areas and snow removal and, and parking issues, but the length has, has been the, the stumbler. And I, I think this is a good conversation, conversation to be having. I mean, the requirement is in the Saldo, which it's in there, I'm assuming for a reason to allow for the flexibility. You know, if it's something we want to consider to, to put into the, into the zoning ordinance and just make it finite at 800 feet or, or another number, that's something we can discuss as well. But I think we, I think it would be the attitude that we need to leave some flexibility, just, you know, due to the, the varying proper.
Now he freezes up.
I lost him. Yeah.
You froze up, Chris. I don't know if you can hear us.
Oh, shit.
Oh, he's back.
We heard that. You heard that?
Now you're back. That's all you had to say. Go ahead.
So where did I, I know I came back. Where did you lose me?
I just.
About 800 feet and something about the zoning ordinance versus Saldo.
Yeah, so if, if it's something we want to consider as a finite number at 800 feet or, or another number, you know, it's something we can consider to put into the, into the ZO rather than Saldo, but I, I think it would, it makes sense to leave some flexibility for this type of, of request, just, you know, due to the, the varying topographies of, of the properties in the township. But I, it, it just seems like 800 feet is the cutoff without having some type of emergency access. That's, that's been, that's been my attitude, and it seems to be the attitude of at least a handful of the other planning commission members. But, but I, I mean, that's my input. Like, I hear what the others had to say.
Yeah, I would, too.
This is Alex Holmer. I was just going to add that I think the 800-foot number came from figuring, I think, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was the frontage would be required for 12 lots. And I know on some of these requests we've seen in the last three projects, we've had varying densities from well under 12 lots to well over 12 lots or equivalent lots. So I think that's, that's part of it as well, but I think the biggest issue is one of emergency access. And I'm not sure if you're at 11 lots or 22 lots, what the, the difference on emergency access is if you've only got one point of entry.
Anybody else?
This is, go ahead, John.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is John Swerdock. I, I have personally been opposed in all three of the cases that we've had so far. I also somewhat disagree with Chris that there should be a, a large amount of flexibility. I actually feel that this is a safety issue for the residents. Anytime you put a resident in a, in a location where they could be blocked in, no matter how long the cul-de-sac is, I mean, it could be 100 feet and you could create a situation, but the longer the cul-de-sac is, the more likely, or the, the possibility increases that somebody could get trapped at the end. I, I've been opposed to the concept of an emergency access, because I don't believe we have a definition of what the requirements of an emergency access are. As you mentioned, Mr. Miller, that we've looked at walking trails, private driveways, but as opposed to how we have descriptions for the requirements for a street, we don't have similar requirements identified for these emergency access roads. So I've been opposed to it for that reason.
Thank you, John. Tim, or who else? Is anyone else on?
Yeah, this is Tim. So my, my only comment was, you know, I understand about the emergency access and, and tend to agree with it, but at the same point in time, I mean, it's a situation where people are purchasing lots on a cul-de-sac, understanding that it's a cul-de-sac. So, I mean, at some point, people need to have, you know, an understanding and personal responsibility for what potentially could happen there. And also, I believe, you start to get in towards, you know, people's property owner rights, property owners that are wanting to develop the property and are within the law, and we put up some type of, you know, barrier with regard to emergency access and what have you, and prevents them from doing what they can do with their property. So I think there's some property owner rights issues that need to be addressed as well. I think John's point about the, you know, standard for an emergency access would be good as well.
Thank you.
This is Andy. My, my only comments with this, I, I'm most concerned with the emergency access, the, the actual, the, the 800 feet, as, as was pointed out in our last planning commission meeting, you know, in neighboring townships does vary, sometimes up to, you know, as Steve, I think, had mentioned, up to 1,000 feet. So I think there is, you know, a little leeway in there for some, for some flexibility and some discussion, but I'm, having been blocked in my development several years back, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of having some form of emergency access.
This is John Swerdock again. If I could make a second comment. I think not having specificity around the requirements puts the mindset into the developers that they can come in and basically push the envelope as far as we're willing to let them, in terms of what they can do and what they can't do. And it would be, I think, more fairer to the developers to have hard numbers, so that when they're designing their, their developments, they have the requirements in front of them, that they are minimally negotiable at best, that, that would become part of their design criteria, and not kind of left open to overall high level of flexibility.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Tony. If I could just comment real quick, is that, you know, the, the 800 feet with the ordinance, I've often said, if we're, if we have ordinance and we don't follow it, why bother to have the ordinance? However, with the emergency access, I agree with Alex and John with that. The longer it gets, you know, the emergency access is more of an issue. However, also with snow removal, as you know, the longer it gets, the more snow goes back there. And it's always an issue with plowing that, and what do you do with it? And, and if the driveway is straight on with the cul-de-sac, what do you do with the snow? Somebody is always mad.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else on the planning commission have any questions or want to bring something up?
This is Alex again. I guess my only other thought would be, I'd be very interested to hear what the, uh, roads department and what the fire marshal have to say with regard to those two issues.
Yeah, I think that's a good point too, Alex. Um, I would like, I would like, I don't know how much more of this discussion we can have tonight without sitting here for three hours. But is there anyone in the audience that would also like to comment on this that has an interest? I'm, I'm not hearing anything. So, um, I, I think, to me, this is a good start. I mean, I'm hearing issues of length. I'm hearing issues of the emergency exit and, uh, and maintenance with the snow removal. And I know with, even with the, um, with a P loop, um, who maintains that center of the loop? I think that, that comes up as an issue from time to time too. So I think those are the kinds of things we need to continue to discussion around. Chris, maybe, maybe we could just in the planning commission meetings, um, uh, just bring this up as a topic just to see where we are. Um, I don't want to let it drop, but I don't want to tie everybody up either. I, I don't, I'm not sure where to go with it. But I think if we had Steve involved and the planning commission and, uh, Greg, um, maybe even James and like, and like was also mentioned, we need to hear from, from the, uh, the emergency, uh, folks, emergency teams.
Yeah, Jim, I would agree with that. Uh, you know, we had mentioned at our last meeting that, you know, maybe we have a, a slow month. We should, uh, just make that our, make that our lead, uh, agenda item.
Yeah, that's a great idea. And, and if we know it's a slow month coming up, maybe, um, maybe we could get ahold of the, some of, uh, fire, uh, one or two fire departments and get their opinion and maybe in, uh, I don't know, maybe there's others we could involve too.
Think you should involve the police department as well.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Well,
This, this is Steve. It, it, just to get the ball rolling, I, I could put together a, you know, brief memo, just a summary of what some of the other standards are in the area, just, just, just for consideration by the planning commission as a starting point of, of what other people are doing.
Okay. I think that'd be helpful. Great. Thank you. All right. Well, I want to thank everybody for, for coming on tonight and getting into that conversation. I think it's out in the public now. Maybe we'll hear some other public comment. Um, I, I can appreciate all of your thoughts on it. Um, I, I heard the exact same things you were just saying in the, in the last few planning commission meetings too. So I think, uh, I think we can maybe tie this down a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, for, for doing this. And thank you for the planning commission members for being here as well. Um, that said, um, any other new business? Then we will move on to public comment. If anyone has public comment, um, it reminded you, we have two and a half minutes. Mr. Lippincott, do we have anything via email for a public comment?
Yes, we do. We have several and I can read them too.
Please do.
Uh, first one is from Kelly Harper. Board of Supervisors, please consider approving the proposed agreement to allow Penridge School District baseball team to use the field at James Memorial. I believe the proposed agreement will mutually benefit West Rockhill Township, Penridge Little League and the high school baseball team. The school district in collaboration with Penridge Little League will maintain the township fields with high standards and the cost outlined in the proposed agreement. Not only will the Little League and the high school teams have an excellent playing fields, the township residents will be proud of their park and their fields. Thanks for consideration. Kelly Harper, Director of Operations for the Penridge School District. The next one is from Craig Witten, who is the head baseball coach at Penridge High School. On behalf of the players and parents, we are thrilled at the opportunity to call James Memorial Park our home field. We had a casual agreement last spring and were able to park from the field and batting cage before the coronavirus canceled our season. We were able to use the field during summer practice and host two tournament games when restrictions were lifted by the governor. When the school came back in session in September, we were able to have all our fall practice scheduled and play a few intersquad games. The benefits for us playing at James Memorial are countless. The area is bigger, the cage is nicer, and the environment is friendly. Parents are excited in attending some of our scheduled twilight games instead of typical 3:30 to 3:45 start. They're able to watch their son play at 6:15. One of the things that I preach as a head coach is to leave the place nicer than you found it. There is a sense of pride that the players have in playing there and to the point where they went into the opposing team dugout to make sure it was left clean. And respectfully request this be submitted for public comments at the meeting. Thank you, Craig Witten, Penridge High School. There's another one. Um, tomorrow, uh, 12/7/21, the board of supervisors meeting the topic of our school field at James Memorial Park or our baseball team is being discussed. This would be tremendous help to our team. Sincerely, Dave Bab, Athletic Director for Penridge High School. I have another one. Hi, Greg. I found the opportunity to speak with the Board of Supervisors meeting Wednesday, February 17th regarding the James Memorial Park field and the relationship between the township and Penridge Little League. I do have an obligation tomorrow night for us to be ready and prepared to speak. If not, please note that I'm supporting Penridge High School utilizing the field. It's Rockhill resident, 113 West Branch Road, and my own children have gone through Penridge Little League and the high school. I truly believe this is a win-win. Um, respectfully submitted, Matt Crowell. Those are all the email public comments.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? If so, please state your name and address.
With all due respect, my name is Matt Crowell. Greg, I appreciate you reading it, but I did get home in time to make my public comment official. Um, I do live at 113 West Branch Road, Sellersville. I think the high school baseball team is under the assumption and has planned for their games and practices to be at James Memorial High School. In my personal opinion, there's nothing worse than driving by an empty baseball field. I'd much rather have students and players and athletes utilizing the field than leaving a field empty. My understanding, there would only be a handful, eight to 10 baseball games. Penridge Little League would be made aware of those games and would not impact the Little League, junior or senior Little League. The high school assists with the upkeep of the field and would always be willing to support in payments and field improvements. If this board has concerns, my suggestion would be to allow these kids to have the field this spring and continue conversations after the season. My personal opinion, if the field is taken away from these athletes, these high school athletes, this will be yet another unfortunate event for these kids. And also, in my personal opinion, a public relation issue for the township. Thank you for all of your time and effort in serving West Rockhill Township. I am a resident of the township. I own the, I am currently on the Little League Board. And also, I do have just a, uh, foreclosure here. Uh, I do have a son on the high school baseball team. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Uh, any other public comments?
Yes, I have one. This is Cole of, on Shucraft Road.
Thank you. Just re, uh, remind you, you have two and a half minutes.
Um, the Citizens for Clean Air, who are Christine and Todd Shelley, Kathy and Brian Werbach, Pamela West and Cliff Cole, would like to thank the township supervisor, uh, for writing the letter to FERC asking for clarification on the safety of the pipeline that was designed for moving oil that is proposed to be converted for moving natural gas by the Adelphia Gateway. Um, that was great. Um, I'd also, since, um, Chief Blake is actually on the meeting tonight, uh, they had announced, um, that you were retiring, Chief Blake, and I just wanted to, uh, just tell you that we, um, very much appreciate the great job you've done as police chief all these years. Um, and also make Go ahead, go ahead. Yep, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Um, and also, I'll just make one more call, comment. Um, let them play ball.
Thank you. Uh, any other public comments?
Uh, hi, Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, Joe Santora. Um, I am not a West Rockhill resident. I'm the, uh, president of Penridge Little League. Uh, but I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak, uh, speak to you guys for a few minutes tonight. Um, so thank you very much. Um, so, uh, you know, I know Dave Reese had an opportunity to speak with you guys and, you know, honestly, my, my conversation was go, uh, was going to go a little different direction, but I, at this point, I kind of understand where your position is. Um, so, uh, like Mr. Kaiser, uh, I, I've been involved with Little League, uh, now for 11 years. I've been pretty much, uh, I've done pretty much every, you know, every aspect of the league I've been involved in. Um, so, uh, I've had an opportunity to move into the president's role, uh, back in January. Um, and this is one of the first things that I, uh, you know, I kind of put on my plate. Um, so, you know, ultimately, um, we would like to work with you. I understand where things are. This was tabled, uh, to kind of take to, um, you know, between now and the next meeting. Um, I would, I would really like to work closely with the board of supervisors to arrive at a arrangement that can give the players of Penridge Little League and from the high school the ability to call, uh, James Memorial Park their home while giving the residents of West Rockhill Township the ability to enjoy all the amenities of the park in a safe way. Um, it's a beautiful park, uh, a, as most people have already said here, um, with the, uh, you know, the sharing the cost and the, uh, the work that the high school is going to, uh, you know, allow us to do. Um, the park is going to be in a, in a much, uh, the, the condition of the field can be in a much better position. The, uh, you know, the park will showcase in a, in a much better way than it does now. Um, and, um, you know, I'm, I'm very hopeful that we can, uh, do what we can to allow these boys to play, uh, their high school baseball season up on the ridge, uh, but James Memorial Park, um, whenever the snow goes away and, uh, the, the field is, is able to be played on. Um, I would love to, uh, arrive at a, you know, a, a good faith, um, you know, uh, agreement that we, we can do this while we're trying to work out the details, uh, so these boys can play baseball. Um, ultimately, we've had a great relationship with, uh, West Rock, West Rockhill Township for almost 30 years. Um, I'm committed to continuing that, um, relationship for as long as I'm in this president's role. And I have an eight-year-old, so I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to be around for a while. Um, so I look forward to working with all of you and, uh, I look forward to connecting with you, uh, on this, um, on this agreement. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments? If not, I will look for, is there a public comment? Excuse me.
Hi, this is Rod Fantaski. Um, live at 115 Springfield Drive in Sellersville. I've been part of Penridge Little League for 15 years and lived and paid taxes here in West Rockhill for 18 years. Um, I think the best comment I heard all night was let them play ball. So you know which side I stand on. Um, I'm trying to figure out the differences. Mr. Miller, when you brought up that Quakertown swim team would be, uh, using the pole at Holiday House for their, for their swim team. So drawing a comparison there, I'd like to see what the differences are, being that our kids need a field to play on. I mean, a lot of good, you know, conversation tonight about why they should play there. I've not heard a lot as far as why they shouldn't. I have one son that went through Penridge High School, graduated, and unfortunately had to play at Second Street. Um, your field, your, your park is, is a showcase to any of the fields in, in the, uh, you know, in the league that Penridge plays in. So I think it's a, a great opportunity for the boys and a great opportunity to showcase your park and the field that Penridge, uh, worked hard to maintain. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none, I will look for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make that. Okay, I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by aye, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is considered adjourned. Thank you very much, people. Thanks everyone for attending.